Okay. Well, we have the school here tonight, which is going to be talking with to us about the new business Rubble's Lane Emergency Lighting, which, as you remember, we had a discussion about the fact that they were cited at Rubble's Lane for an emergency lighting meeting to be updated by the building inspector. So Cheryl Duvall, the Director of Administrative Services, and Kevin, the Director of Plant Facilities and a whole lot of other stuff that they give us. We, you have a number for us tonight?
I have. Number for you, yes.
Oh, thank you.
We'd also like you to describe to you.
Sure.
Describe to you what we went through. When we go out for projects such as these, and we don't have someone in-house that has the expertise of quoting what the job should be, we usually have an estimator come out and give us help with that, so that we know which procurement laws we need to follow.
Right.
So we had an estimator come out, and they gave us a bottom line, and I think it was close to fourteen thousand dollars, but wouldn't give us the details, and basically said, "We're not going to write your specs for you." So we had another electric company come out, and they did the same thing. We put up the specs together and put out our request for patient. I think there was twenty electricians who pulled this either off a combine or we sent it to them. Of course, none of them came up, what, to came up to look at the actual project, so they're bidding why. Then we found out that our estimator left off the battery backup, which Kevin said, "We need a battery backup," or it's not going to place either. And when we did some more digging in, they quoted a project that was much greater than we really needed. I'll actually ask Kevin to go through, go from there, and what he did to get this quote here.
So what the quote was on the original thing that they gave us was to utilize the battery boxes, which control all the remote heads throughout. This quote that you're looking at now is actually utilizing, getting rid of the battery boxes and using self-contained units. Each unit will be self-contained with its own battery backup in it, which are all LED.
Yeah, understood.
So it's all self-contained, and you don't have to worry about the big battery box. So, once we re-spect it and met with this electrician, his installation price, obviously, as you can see, is around four thousand dollars, less than what the initial estimate was.
Yep, yep.
For a turnkey. So he'll supply everything, all labor. Right now, we have it scheduled for his location, whatever it is.
I know that we had originally discussed the fact that we would fund this through our ARPA funds.
Yep.
And now we have a number, so what we will do is, obviously, we've approved the fact that you're going to have to do it. It's our building, and our building inspector said we're going to do this. The fact that you did all the legwork is really helpful, and we thank you for that. Thank you for being here this evening. And I would say that we will, we're going to be doing a big ARPA vote. We're going to be figuring out all the things that we're going to be, you know, putting on the ARPA thing probably at our next meeting. This will just be one of those, so you certainly are, have our permission to move forward.
Okay. We'll get them both very easily on vacation.
Yeah.
I'm sorry you came out for such a short meeting.
That's okay. I'm going to go right to the grocery store, because I can't sit down on a couch.
Okay. Thank you.
Like, it's way under the original, which you thought, that's really good.
Well, it made us question our estimator.
Somebody did their homework. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
And Kevin, if you could just give, give Sandy a call, let us know when the, the work is done. Just because we'll walk around and take a look and make, you know, just to.
Right now, our schedule is pretty good.
Marcus is part of our plant facilities guy, so my guess is he could be there just checking it out when we do it.
When they do the final walkthrough?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll do the final walkthrough, we'll let you join.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll take the foreground after pictures as well.
Oh, perfect.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was his last name? Kevin, was last name?
Kevin Clark. Easy spelling. Okay, that's, that's good news. Sandy?
It is good news.
Make sure we put that on the ARPA thing, so that gets voted next time.
Yep.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. I thank you for being here. I'm going to take you out of order, since you're kind of not on here, but.
Well, I just came to ask, what's the status of the dam fuel reservoir?
Okay, well, Mark and I were just talking about that. The status was in July tenth, twenty twenty-three, after the State Department came and gave us a, you know, a litany of what our options were. The, the previous town administrator and the state kind of recommended that we just breach it.
Breach it.
Let it go. A lot of community interest and support for not breaching it, instead repairing it and maintaining it. The concerns that we had, from, from the board's perspective, was about how much is this maintenance going to cost on an annual basis? So they gave us some.
Also, what is the maintenance?
Well, the, I mean, exactly what would we do?
I think, well, do you plan to have another informational meeting for the public?
We certainly can.
Yeah.
And, well, they said ten thousand dollars a year for maintenance, I think.
Well, they said ten thousand dollars probably every other year.
Yeah, and what's that?
Yeah.
What does that do?
I have no, I have no idea. When they say that they will repair it, okay, and we would just maintain it. Where, and I'm going to ask Mark to explain more of the, of the spillway, and we think the spillway's already been breached.
Well, it has been breached back in the eighties.
Nineteen eighty-seven, it was.
Yeah. So, we think that some of, of the information that they shared with us was a little more like scary than it really is.
It seems a bit extreme, seems a little bit exaggerated from, I mean, I went up there for a major rainstorm. And it, you know what I mean? The, it's, the spillway is large enough where I don't see how you could accumulate enough water in that to actually, you know, take out the rest of, like, the mud dam. It's, it's so low already, and it, I didn't see the danger, honestly. This was, I, I mean, I don't know, I didn't see the danger.
The beavers are raised at about three feet, I think. If that washes out, then the top three feet will wash out, I guess.
Exactly.
But I'm just wondering, what access, is there a road down there?
Yeah, well.
You'd have to get.
Courtesy, a courtesy easement. We'd have to either get a courtesy easement from the landowners in that area. Now, they, some of the landowners who would be providing us with that courtesy, okay, isn't, were here, in, you know, in the meeting. If you said, "Who were they?", I don't know, but they were amenable to saying, "Yep", we would do that. They, and for any construction or maintenance of the state, the state can just take an easement for construction.
Yeah.
They can go in and do it. But the Select Board felt that if we were going to pay money to maintain it, it should have public access, which would be the courtesy easement that people could use anytime they wanted. Now, whether or not that courtesy easement is something that we should have a little more paperwork on.
Well, yeah, I mean, a courtesy easement, we'd have to actually do something with that.
Yeah, saying it in a meeting is one thing.
Yeah, they could say, "Yeah."
Yeah, then they say, "No."
Yeah, and then, but, you know, getting the town attorney and their attorney together and actually putting that together is, is something we would say, we would, you know, recommend blah, blah, you know, repair and maintenance only if we were successful in a courtesy easement from a landowner in the area. And then that would be subject to, and then we could work with that landowner to try to get that easement done.
Right. Well, the other thing is Conservation Commission and the, I want to say, the Land Trust are involved in getting conservation restrictions on some land on either side of the lake. And, I mean, that's great if the town had access, the people could have access to that land.
Yeah.
So that's another consideration. But I just think, if you have an informational meeting, all that stuff should be covered. Maybe I even have somebody from the Autobots.
That would, that would be great, because we know that the Quab, East Quabon Land Trust, they have, like, the western part of the thing, but.
The northern part of the eastern side.
Yeah, and, but the rest of it is, they're, I think, the place itself is deedless. You know, we search, and there's, there used to be this group of people, and then they're all dead, and there's not, there's no.
My father was part of that group.
Okay.
And.
Who was, I'm sorry?
My father was.
Is that right?
He bought the camp there in nineteen fifty-two.
Okay.
And he was, all the people who owned land around there were older than him.
Yeah.
And they kind of died off. And one of them was Charles Dewey, who was the lawyer for the group. And he got older, and he had dementia, and the state was sending letters to his wife, and she wasn't answering them, because she didn't know the situation. Eventually, there was no answers. Nineteen eighty-seven, they decided, well, the dam is a hazard, we'll breach the dam.
So they did that, okay.
So the ownership of the dam, I guess that belonged to Prince River Association.
That doesn't exist anymore.
No longer exists, yeah.
Well, according to the attorneys that did the deed searching for the state, as well as, I think, at one time for the town, there's, doesn't seem to be any owner that they can identify. So it's sort of by default, I think. And some people have bought parcels, I don't know from whom or whatever, along an area where they, you know, do some picnicking and some, have some boats out in that area that, that they go onto the, you know, damned waters. I don't know what we, what do we call it, just Barry Dam?
Yeah, the reservoir, the reservoirs, what they call it.
As opposed to the town reservoir, that's the street. It's, keeps you forgetting yourself. But according to the, the maps from the state's interactive property map, the Land Trust also owns a little bit of land on the corner there.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that's correct or not.
I, I don't know.
The state. But I think Madsen owns all the land.
Oh.
The road, Cheryl Madsen, I think.
Is it Cheryl now?
Yeah, it was Walter Madsen.
Yeah.
Thought I had.
The road, down the dirt road all the way to the end.
Oh, okay, could be.
Anyway, I just wanted to know if there's going to be something.
Well, I mean, we cer, we certainly can do that. This is not a hurry up and let's do it tomorrow operation. I would suspect that sometime, you know, in April or May, that the board could certainly do that and get, I know we're going to have the people from the state come out again and explain very specifically what it means to, okay, repair and maintain. What would that mean for, what would, what would it look like when it was done, and, and that sort of thing? And, and they're very amenable to doing that. We're sort of in this group that have been chosen, okay, to, for the state to do this for, you know, not for free, not for free for them, but for free for the town. And so we don't want to miss that, you know, we don't want to miss that. But first, when they first came to us, they basically, if you read their report, if this damn gulf, fifty, fifty parcels of property.
It's like a nine-foot wall of water, it's just, it's not possible.
Back in the seventies, they came out with an article in the paper about all these dangerous dams in the state, and that was the top of the list.
It's crazy.
But it was eight feet higher than.
Than, yeah, because of the spillway and all that. But now, I mean, it's, it's, it's actually low line, low, I don't know, maybe a couple of feet of water going up to the dam, but then it goes down, it's deeper, you know, in the, in the ponds, you know, area, whatever, reservoir area. And it just, it seems like you would have to, the level of water would have to be so high, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
At, at one time, and have to, you know, it, it just can't happen like that, you know?
There's a lot of shallow areas in there now.
Exactly.
So it's not the entire pond full of water, it's just a few pockets of deep water.
Exactly. Yeah.
So I, I think we're certainly on the same kind of wavelength that the people are, you know, who came to us and said, "Try this, try that", because it doesn't seem to be any danger in us doing it that way.
Yeah, I don't see any.
Well, we thought, they said, what, nine foot?
Yeah, it was some nine-foot wall of water, some crazy thing, yeah. It's like, crazy.
That, that might have been true before they took the dam.
Yeah, that might have been true.
It could have been.
I think Charles G. Allen Company was very instrumental in making that breach happen.
That's what I heard, yeah.
Yeah. And I understand that they had, you know, business down there that they didn't want to have a nine.
Well, they were the first, the first thing they hated.
Right.
Right, I read the letters that they actually sent, and that they were the ones that pushed it. Nineteen eighty-seven, or six, or, was the first one? The first letter I saw was in nineteen eighty-six.
I went down there in eighty-seven, October, and I was surprised that the dam was gone. So, yeah, I'd just like to know if there's going to be an informational meeting.
Well, well, you know, we certainly, we certainly can do that. We're, we're having a state person come in, but we can make a little bigger deal out of it than just putting it on the agenda. Getting the, because we have the names of the people who were at the other meeting. There were probably about thirty people anyway.
I wasn't here that one.
Oh, okay, probably at least thirty people.
Yeah, thirty-five people.
Yeah, and so we can start there and, you know, put it in the newspaper, and, you know, usually we get a, people are really interested in this, at least in the, who live in the area. I'm not saying somebody from down on thirty-two heading into Haverick is too concerned, but.
Well, I remember as a kid, a lot of people didn't even know it was there.
Yeah.
Right.
So I think in town, people think you're talking about the reservoir on Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
Don't even know it's there. But, yeah, I'd like to find out what the maintenance involves and all that stuff.
Well, that, that's what the state, obviously, their representatives can walk us through.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Michael.
Take it up for now.
And thanks, yeah, and hey, thanks for signing up to be on the commission.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate that. And you look like you'd have, just saying. Am I wrong? How many people tell you that?
A lot of people, yeah. And that was, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we can get it back on. We have no public here, sorry, we're other with public. Want to do the minutes, the minutes of February five, two thousand twenty-four?
Well, you need a motion on that, obviously, right?
You can just read, read that.
What's that now?
What's the motion?
Oh, okay. I move to approve the minutes of February fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of February five, and I would second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have it. Those are for public release. Moving to the executive session.
Oh, oh, yeah.
The executive session minutes?
Oh, that's right, we did have that, yeah. Well, I don't, I, I can.
So just say not for release.
Not for release, yeah. I move to approve the minutes to the executive session on February fifth, two thousand twenty-four. The minutes are not for release.
I have a motion to approve the minutes, the executive session minutes of Monday, February five. These minutes would not be available for release at this time. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I seconded that. Okay. Okay, the dam survey, we have a reminder here. And we'll, and we'll come to that correspondence a little later, on Administrator Report. Tammy, you want to walk us through a few items of concern, or that you've been working on?
Just stuff that I've been working on. I had, I met with CMRPC, and we went over some grant opportunities, and we're also on the fuel bidding process, so we can put the DBW on that as well.
Okay, just CMRPC is Central Mass Regional Planning.
Central Mass Regional Planning Commissioner.
Saying, what are they talking about?
Yeah, Central Mass Region, Regional Planning Commissioner.
Yeah.
That's what that is. And we talked about like sand salt, different types of grants that we could apply for down the road. So we'll be going forward with that as we keep moving forward. We have to finish grants before we can go out to them, so. The next thing is tomorrow, a meeting with the finance team, the town accountant, town treasurer, and our assessor. We'll be going over things to discuss any issues that may arise, but this is kind of like the beginning stages, just seeing where everybody is with their cash balances, where we're at revenue. I want to see where new growth might be, anything like that, in that nature. So we'll see how that goes, and hopefully going forward, we're going to be doing this every month, so we'll have an update on that. I also, John, had wanted me to go to Complete Streets training class, so I did attend that. It was very informational, talked a lot about sidewalks and very informative. This is going to help us get to tier two for the Mass DOT grants, so that's very important going forward. Then hopefully down the road, we'll get to tier three.
Tell me what, tell me what the DOT grant is.
So a tier two, right, is, would be thirty-eight thousand, that would be our next step. We'd have to go ahead and do a policy, which hopefully John and I are going to be getting together on that and writing a policy for the tier two. After we get to tier two, a few more things, obstacles we have to go through, we would then get to tier three. That's down the road, takes a little time. I believe it's four hundred thousand or four years for the tier three. Again, it takes a little time to go on, because you have to complete, you have to go through each process to get it all done. So that's what that is.
Is that kind of automatic if you complete the work?
If you go ahead and complete the work, that's the whole reason why people take the Complete Streets classes, is so we can actually get the grants. But it also, for me, it was very, very informative. I couldn't believe, like, the sidewalks and bicycle trails. I mean, they talked about all different types of transportation. If you'd like, I can send each one of you over the discussion. I did send it to John, since he's.
I agree.
So I'll send it to you guys.
Thank you.
You'll find it very interesting, I think. And it also goes along and tells you how to go ahead and apply for a tier two and then tier three, so we can hopefully get more funding down there.
Well, John, John's all neck-deep in that anyway.
He is.
Job, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yep, so that's good. We had a leak at the town hall, which Mark actually took care of. He came right down and he looked at that. He's also been helping out Senior Center with, we had a door, I think we did that today, right, Mark? That was.
Yeah, the, yeah.
Yep, so that's good. And Maureen and I have been working on Senior Center security upgrades, so we'll be doing those locks and doing stuff like that down the road. We're going to look at a few other things as well.
Okay. Okay. Select Board reports, Mark?
Not really anything that I haven't covered with Tammy most recently. Nothing. Well, let's see. The only thing I actually did want to talk about is, at some point, I like to fire up a discussion about our public safety and our police, look into possible regionalization, something like that, just entertain it, if nothing more.
Well, there's no, no question, we're going to have to have those discussions.
Yeah, to survive.
To survive.
And that's, that's kind of the way I see it.
And we do have a little leg in there with doing the ambulance services with Haverick.
Exactly, already, yeah.
You know, and, and I would suspect that all the little towns are going to, we're going to have to do some creative, you know, so we say, coming together collaborations.
Just to keep up all the wages.
Yeah, well, absolutely. And we'll, yeah, to get, to get employees.
We're struggling, we're struggling with that. Everybody struggles with all the communities. I think that'll help.
Okay, I, I have just a couple items, and we know we have some building inspector issues that we have to address. We know fire escapes are, are an issue. We know that we have some lighting issues. We also have some, picking up of some stuff that's, you know, in the way. And I've reached out to a couple groups that do fundraising usually, and they sometimes they rake lawns and, or clean up various, I've asked them, because we need, all we need is muscle.
Yeah.
I mean, Mark and I and John and, we can, we can manage the moving of the stuff and getting it into a dumpster, but we just need four or five heavy lifters, and we should be in good shape. So we'll try to get, get on that and get, get some of that stuff done. Not, not big stuff, it's not, it's not important, and it's not fun work, it's just, it's got to have, it's got to happen. Also, I, I know we have to do some lock changes and so forth at the Senior Center, and so I did check with Quabon when they were here about the name of the locksmith they use and stuff, and so maybe we can use that and get, get something done with that relatively quickly.
Okay, right.
So other than that, I don't think I have anything particular, other than I will say, if any of you are watching state revenues and the reports, state revenues are really, really, really less than they thought they were going to be. We could have, or they say we could have a really good April, and tax collections be significant and make up some of the ground that's been lost. At this point, there's been no nine C cuts for the town, except for that amount of the grant or the funding that was allocated initially to the two-hundred-and-fiftieth group. They lost, I think, twenty-five, about twenty-five thousand?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, yeah.
So that, that was a blow to them, and they're, they're very aware of it, and I'm sure they're making some adjustments, and we can work with them to make sure that they still get, you know, get the, the, because they've worked so hard on these events to make sure that we get those events off the ground that they've been working on. But I do worry about that. Unrestricted local aid is minimum at best on good weeks and good days, and it's certainly, I, I do worry about that. That would be a blow to, to the community. Chapter seventy-eight that goes to the schools, another huge thing that we have to worry about. The problem is, is that because some of these schools in the area, Quabon being one of them, is what they call them safe and health homeless, and so they don't get much chapter seventy-eight anyway, but they do get rural school aid, which is a new, you know, kind of aid, and we're working with administration and finance to try to figure out how we can make that revenue available to the schools quickly. Because right now, they send it to the schools and say, "Oh, you got X number of dollars for local aid." They tell them this in usually October, and then they say, "Oh, but spend it by, by next June." And they go, "Well, wait a minute, we can't do that, because we've already set our budgets, we already have everybody in place that we can hire." So we're working with administration and finance to, to make that a different cycle, so that they can spend that money after, for the next school year, which would make sense. But anyway, so we continue to work on that, and the school district's been involved in that as well. That's all I have. It's kind of, it's kind of a little gloom and doom-y, but it is what it is. Correspondence, we just have what is listed here, which is a DCR reminder, the dam safety phase one inspection for Gaston Pond and Barry. That, of course, is up past the Insight Meditation Group, around the backside of Gaston Pond. I'm trying to think, what's the name of that street that goes down there by Ellsworth?
Hmm, I don't know.
I mean, I've been on it a hundred times, that's really.
Yeah, I don't know.
Anyway, that, that is the area where that dam is located and needs to be repaired, I'm guessing.
Mill Road?
Mill Road.
Mill Road.
Okay, yeah, all right. I was going to look it up.
And then we just had a relatively lengthy conversation about the town reservoir dam, and I think, not to repeat the information that was shared there, but we will plan to do a more public outreach on that, so people are all well aware of the significance of that responsibility that the town has. All right, moving along to new business. Very simple, to set the annual town meeting date and time. The town clerk has recommended June eleventh at six P.M. That is a traditional date, time. Has the moderator been involved in that, or does the moderator have that date?
I'm not sure, I can check with Ellen.
I would basically indicate that if we vote it tonight, we do it contingent on the moderator's review.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I would, I would accept a motion to set the town meeting date and time, June eleventh at six P.M., subject to the approval and recommendation of the town moderator. Do you have to second?
Yeah, second.
We have a motion made and seconded. The vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We just had a, I think we were on TV for it. We do have very good information and news about what it's going to cost us to fix the, the school emergency lighting at Rubble's Lane School. And the, the date, the amount of money is nine thousand.
Nine hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty, so under ten thousand dollars. We had anticipated originally being nearly twenty thousand.
Yeah.
So, and this is LED with the individual separate batty, battery packs.
Battery packs, yeah.
All, very good news for all of us. We don't get much of that kind of good news, where something came in half the price we thought. Special events application for Felton Field, that is the annual, it's becoming an annual thing, Greg's Restoration Car Show and Swap Meet. That is in May fourth, that's usually an April date, but they're moving it to May.
It's weird, it's always that first weekend, so it's weird, the, the dates doubt, yeah.
Well, that's fine. So just, do we have approval for the used, a request to use town property, which is Felton Field? I'll make that motion.
You want a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to move to approve the application for Greg's Restoration Car Show and Swap to use the Felton Field on May fourth.
Okay, and I will second that motion and call the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. And you'll communicate that with Greg?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. And he'll do any other permitting and all the other things that he does. I know he does that annually.
That was all part of that application, so they're good.
Everything is good.
Right.
Okay, a request to use town property in Town Hall and the Common for Christmas and Barry on December seventh. A little ahead of time to get this approved, but I know, I know Sandy likes to plan.
She is ahead of time.
And I'll be doing these, these special.
Yeah, I move to approve the request to town, to use town property, the Town Hall and Common for December seventh, for Christmas in Barry.
Okay, I would second that motion and ask for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thanking those people who, who spend inordinate amounts of time getting ready and doing all of the things to make Christmas and Barry really kind of special. Really, really great job this year. To everyone, Sandy, that you work with, it was extraordinary. The lighting was wonderful, spotlights worked, the horse and the, perfect, it was really well done. Really, no, it really was. Really well done. And then we have a request to use town property, the Town Hall, for Making Opportunity Count. We've done that the last several years in a row, and we need to have a motion.
I move to approve the request to use town property for the Town Hall for Making Opportunity Count Incorporated on April second.
We have a motion made and now seconded to approve the request to use town property by the Making Opportunity Count, Inc. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a motion made and we're seconding, and we'll be full, unanimous vote. Personnel wage authorizations. We have a wage authorization changed for Wendy Grzolka, administrative assistant to the town clerk, goes step three, at eighteen dollars and four cents an hour.
I move to approve the wage authorization for Wendy Grzolka for the, um, assistant town clerk.
I would, uh, I, I would second that motion. We've made, have a motion made and seconded, and I call the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we go vote. Boards and committees, um, we have a council on aging, a resignation to consider from Penelope Dillon.
I would move to approve the, um, council on aging resignation for Penelope Dillon.
I would second that motion with our thanks for her, her, um, time that she spent on previous working on the council of aging. Uh, the, we have a motion made and seconded, call the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It looks like that's, uh, a done deal. I cannot believe that I've seen, seeing this, but this, we are at a point where there is no old business at this particular meeting, and that we are at a point to adjourn unless there is someone here who is seeking us to consider other business.
Anyone?
Anyway, okay, uh, the only, the only thing, Mark, is if you could, um, you know, think if, if you can get some ironworker to look at those.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Um, can you remind me? I'll, I'll, this week I'll do it.
Yeah, I mean, just if they, if they can come out and look and see if, if they're salvageable, or we get another, our bigger problem in both buildings, at the Henry Woods and whatever.
Yep, I will do that. Oh, you know what, I can do that tomorrow.
Okay, and I, and I think what would be really a useful, um, a useful exercise for the board is to sit down and, or walk through, uh, each of the buildings, either with the building inspector or whatever, and go through and say, okay, what, 'cause we have at least to make a list and so on, it's, because there's some issues of deep concern from my perspective at least.
Mm-hmm.
Um, also, um, I'm gonna be giving Sandy a letter to send out to every person that we have who signed up and said, if you, we have no internet, we want internet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So we're gonna send them a letter, um, and the Barry Town Library will be having a little, you know, shall we say, presentation, if you're interested in doing something different. And that's looking at T-Mobile, which the, which they can take a device and look at, you know, work for it for a week or two, and say, yeah, this is, this is, this is good. I'm gonna go to T-Mobile and get this set up for my own home. Um, and I don't know if you watch, probably watch TV commercials. You see the amount of now, T-Mobile ads, Verizon ads, for, for, there's no, wherever in the day, I think the early stages of for someday soon, where it's gonna be like our landlines.
Yeah.
You're, everybody's gonna be saying, you getting ready a landline for, for cable yet, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Like we've done with phones. Um, so I, I'm just so interested and concerned about the people who really want to get something at their home and either don't know about this option, or, uh, you know, and because we have tried with diligence to get them a reasonably priced internet, you know, delivery system to their home, and this seems to be perhaps the best option we have, so. So there, we'll, we'll have T-Mobile come out, or, or Joe, we'll all, from the library, Joe, the director, will be walking people through, showing them how to set it up and, and that sort of thing. So that's good news for that.
One more thing, I, I forgot, um, I wanna ask Tammy, have we made a movement on the elevator for the town hall? Have, if, for a grant for that, nothing? Okay, just curious, just put on the, I wanna put on the back burner.
Where would you say that would go, Mark?
I would say they would probably put it, yeah, right where the, I would say it would go right where the door is, right where the ramp is. That, my guess would be, it would be, you're doing the elevator and they come right up.
Oh, okay.
You see what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't think there'd be any need.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a narrow little place, it seems so anyway, but, you know, there's.
We'd have to hammer the ramp out, get the ramp out of there, and then make a, you know, a, an alleyway into there, and then I would, I would believe that you can get right on and then up and then in. You know, I don't know how big the elevator would be, but, um, I'd, I'd recommend to see, see if we can get, go to the second floor anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I know that, um, years ago, I think the one that we have here was, uh, almost six hundred thousand dollars, I think.
Oh, yeah, these are more like an external type elevator, it's not, it's not quite like this, what's that?
The church, St. Joe's has one.
They do, okay.
But that, that's just a little.
Yeah, but that's only going up four feet.
Right, that.
Yeah, well.
He's talking about the door.
You'd have to do something where they, you're covered enough that, that weather and stuff.
They enclose them, um, you know, I've seen them like that, and it's not anything as elaborate as this. I know, I know exactly what it's all about this, 'cause I used to drill these. But, um, I, uh, I would definitely, um, think that, you know, we could, we could get some, at, at the very least, get to the first floor, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, the second floor would be great, because, um.
But it'd be nice to be able to lose, lose the first floor.
Lose the first floor.
Yeah.
And make it accessible for anybody, you know.
Well, I mean, I'm sure we can bring in some elevator companies and say, hey, what would you do if the town, we get money to burn?
Well, definitely, and, and the grant, the grants that, um, Tammy actually dug into, um, got something out that'll cover that, so. Uh, that's all, I wanna say, that's all.
So I'm just saying that some plant and facility stuff we really should look into, and, um, we may, I say with my fingers crossed, we may have to have a special meeting, um, before, you know, the typical March schedule, based upon negotiations where we are with the police, and, which would, which would be a quickie, but, um, when, once we get a deal.
I know, but.
It, it still appears, though, that we're not meeting again until March eighteenth, so. I talked with the lawyer today and asked if there was any, you know, movement at this point in time, and she says, well, we're just, we're just on schedule, that's all she says, and so we'll be back on working with mediation, uh, on the, on the, um, on the eighteenth of March.
It's crazy, it's when I come in here, we run out, when I, when I was elected.
Boy, listen, listen, that's when we thought we had a deal. When you pay, 'cause in April, right, we had a deal, but it didn't work out. But at any rate, you know, it's, I hope things are turning, and things are always looking better and so on and so forth when the spring comes. It was light when I drove down to the meeting, I thought that was wonderful, and so maybe we'll get really lucky. But we'll just watch for the executive session in case we get lucky and we can move, move that, that thing forward. I, we, I don't expect that we would have a special town meeting or anything like that. I, I suspect that, that we would, you know, we'd be moving around. I, that'd be up to you, Tammy, and the finance people to make the best decision on how to handle that kind of situation, but. Anyway, we hope springs eternal, I think. Okay, well, good, um, I don't think, you, you, you have something like this, you, we'll just, okay, she'll, they'll just send us an invoice when they're done.
I wrote that for all, so.
Okay, and, and they're gonna give us their locks, lock people that they work with all the time, so, one, they have two, and maybe you, you know a lot of people, I don't.
So Sandy does have something she's doing.
We use, we use a company in Worcester.
Okay, what is any of it, yeah?
Um, they just changed it to, it used to be Col, Cola, but it's, it's a different name now, A J something. They're on Pac Ave.
Okay, well, if, you know, if they're used to coming to Barry, that's a good thing, and so we can get them up there, 'cause we need sufficient keys for, I think there's four external doors. We need onto the lock box, we need at least a dozen keys.
I'm calling them in the morning.
Well, yeah, well, we, you know, I, I just, um, and, and Mark, I don't know if you can help us with this or whatever, but I was, I, I talked with Tammy about potentially asking, um, did DPW take those cameras down, that it don't work in the front?
Oh, yeah, I could, I can take them down.
Okay.
It's, yeah, that's minimal, I'll just, I'll get, I'll get them down.
Okay, there's one other one that's, um, you know, down the bottom.
On the shed?
In the shed, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll get them down tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, 'cause I suppose, I, they, I guess they're not functioning supposedly because where they put them, there's no sun.
There's no sun, yeah.
Because they're solar operated.
Yeah.
Now, is this something, if we take them down, should put new ones up that are working, because it was somewhere prior?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I think, I think we have to have a conversation about that. I don't, I'm not adverse to it, but if we don't use solar ones or maybe place the solar panels somewhere different, we're gonna have to do some wiring.
Yeah, the, you know, um, it's, I think it's definitely something that, um, has to be done. We have, um, just, side note, we have a TV in the dumpster today. Um, so I don't, um, we didn't get rid of the TV.
And it wasn't from us.
Okay, so.
Well, I mean, we could lock the thing.
Right, but I guess.
It's hard for them.
And then they can't, you know, so. I just think that we should monitor those things a little bit better, that's all.
Well, we can with the, uh, we just have to put it, you know, 'cause it, I mean, literally, there's no sun at all for some of those cameras, and so they just don't work, they just don't have the capacity.
The cameras do a lot of thing, I mean, they, if people know they're, they're deterrent, and, you know, that we wouldn't have this problem if people know they're there.
Okay, so those are, you know, those are the kind of little things just to wrap up, so. Sandy, I'll be giving you that letter. I have the str- I have the ni- the street. Okay, the streets and the people who signed up. Okay, who said, yeah, I want you to do something, yeah, I want, I think there's maybe sixty or five or seventy. Some of them are the, on the matrix line that I think is gonna get operational.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's insane. That's like before I got on the board.
I did hear from them, but they have not, I, they're supposed to give me a summary of everything that's going on, and I'll reach back to them again tomorrow, 'cause they didn't send that to me, but it's supposed to be starting, they're supposed to be starting on it.
I would hope so. It, I know it was a long negotiation with Verizon.
Yeah, they're supposedly gonna be on Spring Hill soon, so. I, I definitely like to, um, make sure and have it out there that, um, this was all happening before I was on the board, and it's kinda funny that Spring Hill's getting stuff, but.
Oh, I see what you mean, I see what you mean.
I just don't want it to look.
If I were you, I'd just smile.
Uh, yeah, I know, right? I just wanted to know, I got nothing to do with this.
Mark, you get blamed in the furnace, you may as well take some credit for what I say.
I'll take it.
So, but anyway, I think we're, I think we're good, Tammy, thank you so much, and I will see you at our meeting at three P M tomorrow, okay? And, um, I'll drop off that letter with the, I'll get my signature stuff so we can get that out.
Do we have to move to adjourn here, or?
Yeah, uh, like the, a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
We have a motion to adjourn, I'll second that motion, and I guess we're done.